Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
What?
Hey.
Any changes on the agenda?
Um. The second bullet point under Ben is to adopt the resolution should be general basic to secondary roads fund. That's the only thing I had that was a change.
Okay.
Anything else? That's it? That's it?
That's it.
Well, with that correction from Rural Services General Basic on that bullet point, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sorry.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
At motion there. All right. We get the minutes from January third.
Look at them. I did. And this is what we're cheat that we're approving, but it doesn't have all the extracurricular.
There should be.
Yeah, cuz there was another one sent out a second.
I didn't look at that.
Everything.
I did read that too, and I cannot find anything. I mean, I didn't read it in place magnifying glass, but it looks right. Say we're okay with it and make a motion to approve.
We added online. I'll say hello.
Good. Hey.
Excuse me. All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Unanimous motion carries. All right. All right. We need to approve the claims.
Uh, two hundred and thirty-six thousand eighteen dollars and thirty-one cents. That's two, three, six, zero, one, eight point thirty-one drainage, two ninety-seven even, two nine seven even.
It could be an all-time low.
It was.
How much has been posted or something?
I would second Dave's motion for those numbers.
All right, we have a motion in the second for general basic at two hundred and thirty-six thousand eighteen dollars and thirty-one cents. And drainage at three hundred and seventy. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, it is.
Okay, motion carries. All right.
I'm just writing the names down so Trish is.
I got it too.
You got it, all right.
I got it to all this, yeah.
Be careful with you.
No, I don't wanna be. I'm not a statutory, but it's all these years.
That's, yeah, I really do, too. Yeah.
Little, little rough around the edges.
All right, any general public concerns? See anybody, so they know.
I can't.
Oh, with the, oh, there, here, I guess, here's all the. All right, so we wanted to introduce Wilson today. And Wilson, I'm gonna let you introduce yourself. Tell yourself a little bit about yourself. It's our new, our ten custodian.
Hello, my name is Wilson Etcheverria. And I just moved into town from Newton. And I have family here. I'm closer to Frank's and also moved on up here. Justice past office, bought a home here right, right around Rainbow Drive and. I am gonna be your part time.
All right. Well, welcome.
Yes, good luck with everything, Wilson. Nice to meet you.
Don't hesitate to ask any questions or anything, so we're here every Monday.
The grand kids. Etcheverria down there. No relation, no relation now.
No wrestlers in your family, right? All right. Yeah, thanks for coming in. Yeah, we can meet everybody. Okay, thanks, Wilson. Thanks. All right.
Do we have another introduction?
Yes. I was like, where's that?
No, I just say, in case if anybody knew that doesn't know, not the engineer.
Yeah.
Still don't know how to pronounce your last name. I do. Nobody else does. I correct everybody better.
I've been pronounced, I'm Lou, so that's kindergarten, so it doesn't.
I've been correcting your last name for three years, and I'm just, I made it gain with a couple people.
Yeah.
Most of them, I think.
It looks like Lou.
I've been naming Rhymers Ramirez. I don't think so.
I'm gonna go with Ramirez from now on.
Okay. Works and Remer.
I like Ramirez, that's all.
That was when the girls were in school. They were in volleyball.
There you go.
Ramirez.
Who's that?
They look.
Okay, might have been jumping.
Hey, Ben, it's your turn.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, Trish has got on here to approve two resolutions for uh, transfers. Uh, one from rural, rural basic for seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. The other is from the general basic fund of seventy thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. This is half of the allocation towards the county for the fiscal year.
Half?
Yeah.
First half or second?
This is the first half.
Okay.
And then the second half usually comes in in June. So the way we've, the way we've done it in the past is basically we spend out of the secondary road pot for the first half of the year and then get reimbursed. And then. Spend out of the. Yeah, spend down the first half through the second half of the year and then get reimbursed.
So Trish, do you want them as a separate, or do you want them, the resolutions, or can you do them both together?
You can do them both together.
You're here.
Well, be on the safe side.
Thank you very deal.
Under that, you will. I'll do the first one. That's the resolution TX two zero two three dash zero one. Transfer seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents from the general basic bond to the secondary roads fund.
I will second Eric's motion.
All right, we have a motion in the second to adopt resolution TX two oh two three dash oh one. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 And opposed, the motion carries. Right.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution TX two oh two three dash oh two. Approving the transfer from general basic to the secondary roads fund. Seventy thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve TX two oh two three dash oh two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, none opposed the motion carries? All right.
It's all that I have official. I'm sure you guys heard the radio last week. We did end up, but I had an accident secondary roads. Uh, tipped over one of our dump trucks. Uh, down, I guess I call it pink school corner. Wednesday morning in the dark, loud and snow. Operator was turning around at that intersection and lost where he was at at the intersection. Backside of Dan's got off the edge of the road and it was just enough of the box up in the air that it sent him on a soft tip over.
It just kept going over the mid-side.
Yep. Uh, it tweaked the frame. Um, right now it's, I don't know, using a level. It's about a full bubble off. Uh, front bumper and rear bumper. Talked to um, Don's Truck Sales, who we purchased the truck from. We're planning on hauling the truck over today. They're gonna take the box off. Then they've got a company that they use to, basically they put the frames in. Greatener. And go straighten the frame for the box back on.
Should be all right.
Should be all right, yep. That's made of repairs or around nine to ten thousand. Figure about thirty-five hundred for straightening the frame and other five. Remove the box, replace the box, any existing uh, hydraulic hoses. That might be damaged and then. There's a possibility that they might find more when they get in there, but as of right now, it's gut shot.
No, also check the box. Make sure it needs welding or anything while it's off.
Yeah.
That way it's ready to go in the truck back. I'm into them.
To make sure that the, the large lift cylinder isn't damaged, so.
Well, unfortunately, it happened, but the good news is we didn't have other vehicles that were involved in it. No one was hurt, so I guess there's.
Yeah, that's the silver lining and more. Boy, you didn't get hurt and. No other vehicles.
It's a pretty slow speed deal. It was back up and just for.
Yep, slow backup. Uh, was one of our newer employees, he had five days. I think that was day five.
Oh.
Really slow.
Well, he chalked it up to his running.
Yeah, it's from right to the fire.
The center is, there's not a lot of windshield time before.
Yeah.
Even in July, stuff finds snow to.
Practice. What you do is drive the truck out.
Yes.
Well.
Well.
We were.
What happened?
True, I guess.
Yep.
There's not a lot of trucks out there to replace it, so it's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a good thing that it was a small one.
Yeah, take care of it.
Otherwise, we'd be looking at probably a two-year turnaround. We'd get a big order.
All right. You brought this up a while back on the, not trucks, but uh, road graders that were ordered. Are you expecting delivery? I can't remember what.
February thirteenth will be the delivery of the first one. Uh, March fifteenth, then it was delivered the second one. So it was originally, it was supposed to be one in January, one in February, but they're delayed about three weeks.
It's a back about a month. I think both those go to the boat shop.
Both those will end up going to boat shop.
Okay. All right, so they're just a month pushed back on our last delivery dates.
Right, I think the original delivery date was the third week in January. Now it's the second week in February, so.
Okay, so other than that, we're gonna get them here.
Yep, okay, yeah. Uh, I guess with all the snow, we have had some breakdown. I got a machine down in. Uh, down at Murphy and uh, the ear box broke on our old cat. And Tom's running that down, I think, I think Friday he ran it down to get a new ear box, so we'll get that one back.
Oh, the old snowball would work.
Great. It did. Uh, we got a little bit of work that we gotta do on that right now, but.
Still works.
Still ran.
I saw the video on Facebook. It was pretty good.
Yeah, you have a lot of likes on Facebook.
Yeah, people really enjoyed the strike. I don't think they enjoyed the snow, but they enjoyed the snow.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Hope you don't have to use it in this year.
Yeah, hopefully fix it and put it back.
Yeah. Well, that's good. It's a good thing to have around.
Yeah.
If you're running.
I, I looked at one time for a replacement unit that goes on the front of a net motor, but.
He said that's.
Three years ago, it was a quarter of a million dollars, so I'm.
That's, that's hard to believe. And that's, and that's probably just a snowball. As a motor and a blower on the front of a paintover. Is that right, Ben?
Yeah.
Is a motor and a blower on the front of a paintover?
It's a separate engine unit with, with hydraulics and everything that it's sold.
Hmm, that's, that's unbelievable.
I haven't priced them lately. Like you said, they were two hundred and fifty thousand like three years ago. So I'm guessing they're probably.
Four hundred now.
Four hundred at the.
State has one over Clarion, and they've been using it on some of the intersections with phone. That thing really throws gross, so.
Yeah, I seen um, uh, between here and Sparville, you know, on one sixty-nine.
That's a lot of money, but I guess when they need.
You get those years, sometimes that's your only option.
Yep.
You, you just keep this one running. You got a lot of room to work with between repairs and a new one.
Yes, exactly.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
We didn't have copies of the um, quarterly reports, so I'm just gonna pass them out and everybody, the one person can look through them and does that sound good?
Yep, sounds great.
Copies?
Yeah, we make enough now.
Yeah, so just kinda. Everybody can kinda. The ruse.
That one.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept auditor quarterly report ending twelve thirty-one twenty-two.
I'll second.
Okay. With motion from Bruce and a second from Dave. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, unanimous, so eyes on it.
Make a motion on the quarters quarterly report for the same time period, twelve thirty-one twenty-two to accept and place on file. My second.
Okay, we have a motion from Eric and a second from Rick. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, unanimous, motion carries. All right, accept and place on file the sheriff's quarterly report.
I'll make the motion to accept and place that on file.
Also, you know.
Okay, we have motion from Dave and a second from Bruce. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, unanimous, motion carries. All right. Hey. We need to go into the bridge to. Talk about this.
For you?
No.
No?
That's good.
I make a motion to go into green week. Second.
All right, Terry, you have the floor.
That. When you go, we got all sorts of stuff.
Am I a short one? Here. I don't, okay, I might be. I'm glad I didn't. I might have given you two of them, you don't know.
I can look with Rick if you need.
There you go.
Okay, so this is just um, further discussion on the spring levies. Um, what I did is I made a copy of each of the drainage ditches, which is your first one, your thicker ones. And then it shows you if it has already a ten-year waiver on it. Um, it shows the amounts of all of the different warrants. And then um, if there is only like new, say that DD three down at the bottom. Um, the new on DD three is thirty-six hundred ninety-three dollars. So I just put down what the new work would be. Um, but that way you guys could see all of the warrants that are outstanding. Um, be it a ten-year levy, a twenty-year levy, or if it's new work or old work. So, right now, we think we're at about two hundred and fifty thousand that. Could be levied this spring if you decide to. Um. But I thought that way you could at least see all of the different levies. And then the total amount at the very back is just everything that was waived, which is one million three hundred. But that's not everything that's new and due at this time. Oh, and then there's another sheet in there. Um, Eric requested this that would show there was quite a lot of work that was done in DD six. And eighteen and twenty-nine. Um, these just show the ones that would be hit the hardest if we do, because there was quite a bit more work done in six and twenty-nine. Um, eighteen seems to still be coming in, but it's not as much. So it shows you the ones that would be hit the hardest and what their total amount would be for the spring levy, and that would be your. Second sheet with the yellow, and it gives the, the different landowners.
Well, did you talk, you talked to Doug straight also?
Yes, so did he call you?
I called him too.
Okay.
Cuz I was like, I knew there was some. Speculation on it.
Yes.
Which I still am.
Well, from my understanding, like I say. As super, as trustees of the drains district. When a project is completed, whether it's September, October, December, the only month we cannot levy is July. So if our project gets done in September, we can put the levy out. We put it up for levy. The landowners have twenty or thirty days at that time to make a decision whether they wanna pay it all.
Or they wanna work it.
Or they can put it on a ten or twenty year. If it's over five hundred dollars, partially.
But it's not due payable.
But it's not due until September. Then in September, they also have the option to pay it half in September, half in March.
Just like regular.
Just like regular taxes. And those are for the ones who do not choose to extend it over ten to twenty years, whatever we decide on. So they have actually three options to pay it immediately when we put it up for levy. Or wait till September, cuz we'll have to send out an assessment letter. Is that correct?
Yeah. I didn't realize it was such a first in the assessment levy.
Well.
Technical.
Technically, you send them out just like you get your taxes when your assessments go up. You get a letter before you get your, your uh, tax statement. So when that letter comes out, you have twenty days to decide whether you wanna pay it all. Or put it over ten to twenty days, and you have to notify the treasurer that yes, I wanna extend it over ten. Whatever we decide whether the pay period is ten or twenty years. You have to notify the treasurer of that. So you got that option paying within, I think it's twenty days.
I, well, I would almost say it's thirty.
I think it's twenty. I don't know. I think I got that notice.
Yeah, from the notice.
Then it goes to September. Following September, it will come with your taxes, and you can pay, you can decide to pay it half in September and half in March. Or you put it over the ten years. And the only, to me, the only time we need to do levies other than September, probably. Big projects, you know, when you got a ten thousand dollar levy over, you know, thousands of acres, it's foolish. To send that for clerical work and postage and all that stuff. But when we have large projects, as soon as they're done, and the board of, uh, now, oh, the. I struggle with that word all the time.
Commission?
Commissioners, commissioners, you know, we approve all that, then we need to get it out. So they have the option. That, that way the farmer can put it over two years. He could, you know, if the thing was done in November, he could put it in twenty twenty-three and half in twenty twenty-three and half in twenty-four if you want. It gives them more options, cuts down interest rates. Uh, it's a better approach. We get money. The county gets money faster.
There's problems. I don't know if our software allows for it.
I know.
And that's the only.
That's the headache. There's no benefit to the, the only benefit to the farmer is he might be able to get it in a different tax year.
Trish, would it only be just a little bit of interest that? If they paid part of it?
Yeah, according to the law, it doesn't even draw interest until September.
Until September, that's what I want.
September after, after, after its levy. That's the point. That's the way I read it.
I thought when Doug was telling me that you send out the letter, you have thirty days to pay that. Levy at that time without interest.
Mm-hmm.
And after that, it accrues interest individually. Until the thirty, I can't remember now. Never mind. Cuz I know the first twenty, thirty days, there's no interest in, but you don't have to pay it technically, so it must not draw interest until the. The October first.
Mm-hmm. It does not draw interest until October first.
But this would make sense if it's assessed before then.
You can levy anytime.
You can levy any month of the year except for July.
But it's just like property taxes, if you don't have it paid by September thirty.
Then, then you start getting more.
But the only thing is there's still six percent warrants that are.
Well, unfortunately, I think the county eats up the way, the way I read it.
And then, yeah.
I mean, we basically, you know.
I, I don't know how to stop it.
Mm-hmm.
With the treasurer's office, and maybe that's something we need to talk to with solutions to.
But that's, that's the way it needs to be done when I have large projects. Uh, the maintenance usually will fall under the, but even sometimes we have large maintenance bills.
Well.
Yes.
They could be up to a hundred and thirty-nine thousand now.
A hundred and fifty-nine one?
Oh, it's gone up.
Yeah.
It's a hundred and five.
I actually got you guys this sheet too that I got from Sean.
A hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Hundred and ninety-six. Yeah, so.
Same theory though, if, if you push that and it's, it's a big project, it'll be a big project. You'd make the same thing on getting a levy, even though it wasn't in here. Yeah, even if it wasn't. Ten miles addition, a hundred and fifty thousand, we'd love to get it right away, right?
Your levy till October first.
Yes. Yes, well.
Yeah, cuz it figures it by itself, doesn't it?
What's that? You talking about software now?
Yeah, the interest calculating that, that would have to be your, the solutions, cuz they would have to. Reprogram. We should think other counties would have that too. They would have programmed that for other counties, other counties.
They don't, they just don't do it. They do it accordingly.
Because I think partially because the software is so janky.
That's the reason. Not a program. Put it that way.
That's why the.
Okay, so I see.
It just, it's such a headache, and I don't know, maybe Rick and I talked, you know, that. We have a big drainage, of course, Humble County and surrounding counties, a lot of drainage, but to further the way you go, there's less. And so apparently the software developers don't see this as a multi-million dollar project like they do for other software, and that's probably why drainage software hasn't been developed. Cuz it shouldn't, but to have the program that, you know, they could obtain. It's, it's a real small percentage of how much across the whole country. How many people use drainage in, you know, Colorado? It all runs off the mountains.
Right.
There's not much drainage, you know, it's natural. It's not man-made like ours.
Correct.
Well, I got two things. First of all, a big thank you to Terry for all of your additional work, cuz I know this is not, just jump out at you without going through and figuring it.
Thanks.
And when we talk about, uh, you know, the, the thing, like Rick, thank you for Richard and sort of, um. Getting levies out sooner to, to avoid interest. People don't like to take interest. And I think the thing is, and this goes back to Bruce's, keeping an eye on how much is accumulating in each district, now we know. Because even the repair thing that build up a thousand dollars here, two thousand dollars there in a set district for repairs, not big projects. That adds up over time, and that accrues, accrues interest over time, so. Um, I think we need to levy more often with the smaller amounts. I mean, the people that got levies last September wondered, there was stuff from five to seven years prior.
Yeah.
And they get really confused and.
And, and it also doesn't happen outside their window. It, it could be six miles away.
Right, right.
Down the ditch.
Yes.
And they don't even notice it being done.
No, they don't, cuz they're in a big district, but so. Uh, I think this is really what we wanted for discussion, but the fact that. Um, you know, we do get the levies out sooner, cuz we have people that ask us, well, even on their five, six thousand dollar levy for their repair stuff, not big projects. What's the interest on this? How long did this sit here and accrue interest? They don't like, you know? And we went through one of those, and he said, oh, well, that's reasonable. But if it accumulates too long and they happen to be a, a large share landowner in a district with a lot of repairs, and they've got a ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollar bill for their parcels. And it's straggled out over five, seven years, their interest is gonna be higher and they don't like that. They wanna get it paid. Their interest is gonna be higher and they don't like that, they wanna get it paid.
Now, the treasurer's office, the only time that they can accept.
They can only accept it.
We.
Those times.
Well, technically through our software.
They can only accept the money at those times.
Right, but during only.
The first, whether it's twenty or thirty days, first twenty or thirty days, and then when it's sent out in the mail. On the September and March.
Okay.
That's.
Because the assessment actually creates the tax statement or claim or invoice. And then that's how the treasurer can accept payment. Otherwise, they don't have a place to collect that.
And to hold it into one.
And so that's the only thing we'd have to figure out is how they can hold it.
Yeah, without interest. Well, it has to go.
Without.
Has to go somewhere.
It has to be put into something.
Let's be ledgered somewhere to track it. But then if you did like a once a year and a continual once a year, then would that be? Because like, like you said, they did get some that had not been levied for a while. And then I just wonder if that would be. You know, cause then they could expect, okay, well, this is what I'm gonna get when I get my, my property taxes, I'm gonna get this also, and. We know it's gonna come in September, and, you know, just a thought that. That way they know and they'd expect, okay, it is gonna be a once a year, it won't be for everybody, because not all of them are done. Which that, you know, that.
As things go, and especially this screwed up software program, you know, that could have been the case, Terry, for always, but. You know, now we're taking what should have been done over the years, a harder look at what is there each year. You know, like you said, just to September.
Right.
What is there? Five hundred dollars? I don't like something like that. And I will mention one other thing too, and I know this is going back Patricia's days as drainage clerk, and we talked. Over levying and so on and so forth. Sometimes we levy a bit more amount than if it's a fifty thousand dollar across the district levy. Then you levy fifty-five thousand dollars. Sometimes there are some, and everybody pays a little bit, and it's in the account.
So there's money in there, there's a small amount that needs to be done, and they've got it in, you're gonna levy that.
You keep a little bit of a balance. You gotta look at it like checking account. Every Drains District has a check. It's nice to have a little cushion there.
Then the five hundred thousand, fifteen hundred dollar minor repairs. Don't, there's money there to pay though, and it's, there is no interest accrued, and it extends a time, and they don't get a levy every year. And so.
And less paperwork were.
Yes.
For both offices. When do we have to let them know in order to do a March or the September? She was saying the other day that it has to be, the notices have to be sent out by a certain time, so. We can't just pull this out of, you know, the week before. And say we're gonna do it.
Once the prob- you know, if it's a new project or if it's a repair that we've done.
Right.
We can say we want district drainage ditch three levy.
Okay.
Period, period. They send.
We do the notices.
Except for July, we can do it any month except for July. You send that out, they have, we'll go with the thirty days. To come in and decide whether I want that over ten years. And we have the authority to decide.
Change.
If it's over five hundred dollars on a forty acre potter sold, they have the option to do it over ten years. Minimum, if it's, if it's even higher, we can change that to twenty years.
Okay.
And then they have, once the letter comes out, the assessment, they have thirty days, they could come in and pay it within that thirty days and be done. And that's where their concern is, what does the treasurer do with those funds until September? The way I read it, she holds them. That's, that's, the treasurer holds the funds.
But he has to somehow track it to make sure that when the right time comes, she can put it against those accounts.
That's right, yeah.
That's, that's the tricky part.
To track everybody's individual.
No, because and that's the tricky part, because then it isn't taking off the interest of the project.
If you're not applying. Can't we find out if, that we can just have a whole account at the bank for this, and then at least we'd be getting interest money on that?
Good, true.
You know what I mean? And then at the time that we can actually. Log it or whatever you wanna call it, then it goes against their accounts and it's taken off. She'd have to do an Excel spreadsheet or some kind of database or something. Access something.
The one thing about.
Well, the thing is, you know, back when that law was written, everything was done with a pencil.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't have computers program.
And, and they didn't have a hundred and twenty-six drainage districts in Humboldt.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, if we do do it that way, we do have.
That law was written.
Everybody has Excel, you know.
How about though, as far as like with Rick's research, and every month it's up to live to get a bigger project levy, to get, get that. You know. And it's gonna be a headache, apparently, like you just decided, go keep in track of, but. I'll, you know, the, the, outside of, you know, the September levy, and then the project gets done some other time during the year, and we get all the. Protocol, and we levy it, it's just one project, right? And so we're not taking this much and putting it through that process. We're taking one specific project and putting it through that process, so it's a small, concise, it's gonna be one drainage district.
Yeah, one or maybe two at the moment.
Yes.
Well, sooner or later, we're gonna fumble it all down to that anyway. I mean, we aren't hopefully gonna have thirty different deals going on.
No, no, and then.
Gonna be whittled down as we work out.
Yes, and then if we, you know, take, look at information like this. And then we think we're, it's a whole con- trying to put the whole conversation together, it's a tad bit easier to. Do this in September with this screwed up software.
Right, yeah.
Tad bit.
We try to keep it as simple as possible.
Yes, and then, going back to what Bruce said a long time ago, we take a hard look at information like this in June. And then we say, yes, this, 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 and this gets levied in September.
Probably sooner than June.
Yeah, yeah.
Go through similar information and say, this is levy for September, get this off the books, send it out, get it done. And, you know, we're guilty, you know, it wasn't all our fault, we weren't, haven't been here for a hundred years. That wasn't kept up on enough, and, you know, this is something that should be looked at every single year in May. For the September levy, even if we didn't have a big project right in the year, and per Rick's research, if we had a big project, we're gonna levy it. End of story. But I am, so, being for a drainage and Terry did all this good work and kind of got minds around it, I have a question. Uh, in DD six, where you wrote this down, that was the largest amount today for district, right?
Yeah.
It's all, I think where we're at now, is that something we wanna pick on as a district and? Go through the levy process or just DD six? Or does it ride till September, and then we have this similar conversation, and obviously we'd be all levying them? And then we needed to buy that. Well, you can see the numbers per landlord.
Okay. Levying it now will not make any difference on the landowner, cause they can still pay it in the same physical year.
True.
The, the benefit would be, you would be able to take this money, put it into bank or, I don't know, if you give banks now giving. Four percent, three percent. And how many, how many, what is the total amount of that?
I got sixty-two, two thirty-nine, it's close, I might have. I'd say, there's some, a few different ones, who knows. Those are just the big ones, because, yeah, he's pretty much said that I get just the big, the large, yeah. I think DD six, um, because they got.
Eighty-nine.
A large levy.
Two years ago.
Yeah, I was thinking it was like. You got eighty-nine on one of them, because they, a lot of people are gonna get hit with. The six, and then there's also the branches, um. You got lower main ditch is also thirty-six thousand, three ninety-four, and this is on page eleven. Yeah, the upper main ditch is thirty thousand, so they're gonna get sixty, ninety, about a hundred and fifty, sixty thousand dollars on theirs. And they just got hit, um, or got levied last September. It was, oh, I, I know it was like over two hundred thousand. It might have been about two fifty or so. Yeah, so, um, so they, and a lot of them are going to pay based on all three of the. The areas, so that's where some of those numbers came in from.
They're gonna pay on all three, but it's a percentage of whatever.
Right.
But they're gonna pay that regardless. So I guess that's the question, do you wanna move forward to that?
Well, I mean.
Yeah.
Here, it's funny, you know, you, you're in this drainage district and, you know, it's a big project. And there's a lot of money owed, and you look at, oh, well, we sent them a big chunk of this boys. But there's still somebody paid, what should we hold off and check?
Then we're debating it.
But I mean, they're. It should be their decision where they.
Their decision.
It'd be kinda like, oh, you took your car and you get work done on it, and the mechanic sends you the bill, and he says, well, I really wanna charge him the whole amount. Because I'll, I'll hold that one, send the rest one six months later.
Yeah, but they still owe it.
They still owe it.
I mean, they're not, there's no way around it, it's, it's work that was done, and.
And it could be more by the time we levy and extend it.
Potentially.
I mean. You have. FEMA events and everything else that come up, and that was. A lot, we had two years of FEMA back to back.
Yeah, that's. I'm trying to find them. I lost track of the district, what it was, but.
But what, what I'm, what I'm looking at. Is the money from, by the time this gets out, it was January, February, February, September, six, six months.
February would be seven months.
Seven months.
September is the ninth month, so.
Is, I mean, we're talking probably four percent interest.
That we do.
No, that, they're not gonna, they're not gonna get the whole year's interest from now until September. Right, because we ain't gonna get it out, and then they have thirty days to get in, so they could possibly make their payment in March. For this year, or maybe February. Rather than pay it in February or September. But it, it, it needs to go out this year for sure, but whether we go through all the extra work right now. And cost to send it out now. That's, that's.
You're saying it's per the. Dollar amounts.
Yeah.
Time, we know that's probably most of what we're holding in our hands is gonna get levied in September.
Yeah.
Maybe not every last.
Yeah, interest on the whole project is probably gonna be probably six, seven thousand dollars. That we're saving going through this process, if we levy it now compared to letting it go out in September, like we are gonna do all these other smaller ones. But my point for having this discussion, so we get on the page and doing it the right way when we have larger projects.
Get them done.
Get them done, so we get the farmer the opportunity to get it paid, or the landowner, whoever bill goes to.
Yep. I think between that and then looking at this in May, every year, every single year. And then deciding what's getting levy in September, remember, Bruce made the comment, that should catch us up. And keep things very current.
You know, that will give us time to get, sort through this, and let's get it, figure it out how we're gonna do it the right way. And proceed with it.
Well, we started a long time ago trying to keep track of all the different job orders.
We've done a lot better on the work.
We're doing better on the work orders, and we're keeping those pushed forward, so I think we step forward and make this work.
And it will.
Terry helps us by saying, uh, Drains District Board, starting to creep up there. And we figured it out, and we get it going. It's really easy.
Yep, it just has to be done.
Yeah, we just.
Then this stuff starts going bad. I just, here was, I found my example of being for a rainy, that I happen to have intimate knowledge of, but there was a project done this past year, twenty-two. Um, and what it was, it's, it's states twenty-two, district twenty-two and twenty-five common outlet, and that is these two pile districts. Dumped into a small ditch that goes into a big ditch, but this is their small ditch, and that was a, a maintenance. Of cleaning that ditch, it had never been, you know, hadn't been cleaned in anybody's memory. That project is done. But by the same token, uh, the levy amount here is showing twenty-five thousand for that, both, that's both districts. The common outlet. So just, I mean, for what it's worth, we know that project is done, but there again, it's not a million dollar project, so. I mean, that is one of those things, and there again, talking to district, the pile districts that are paying for this, this levy.
The, yeah, the whole thing just boils down to when Terry brings to us and says. These districts need to be levy, and as trustees, we have action on it, says, yes, take it to levy. That's when the farmer has thirty days to come in and pay it, if he wants to. He doesn't have to, his bill is gonna be the same the first of September, as if it was the fifteenth of January. But he has, but the only time that affects him is if we do it like over the end of his, his year. His fiscal year, cause sometimes they wanna pay it in two different years. So. The, the, the day that we, as a board, approve these districts for levy. And they, and they send out the assessment letter. Yes, that's, that's the part, when we make that action, that's when that process starts, right?
So can we do like? A committee that work for this. A queue, and to work with Doug Strike, the attorney, and Jan Pattinger.
I think we all need to get on the same page and get it.
Because we don't. We can't do much without one or the other to know exactly.
You gotta work together. Yeah, you gotta work together, and like you say, if there isn't software to do it, it gets extremely hard to track it. So.
You're relying on an extra spreadsheet that you don't know, it's really, it's somebody remember to put in the right.
So. I see that it is action, whatever, there. I think we should get these out for September eleven.
All of them.
And proceed forward in getting this straightened out. So we get it done correctly.
September assessment?
Definitely.
And what levy?
Which ones?
I mean.
The one, the March or the September, is that what you're talking?
They can't get it for March.
No, no, that's what I'm saying.
It won't, well.
It always.
You cannot ever do March payment, May.
It always goes to September.
Always goes to September.
Okay.
Um, but you can collect at any time, thirty, up until thirty days after. The levy is which one you guys sign up how much.
Yeah, we, when we approve that to go to levy, there's thirty days that's coming in bed, and then that money goes into a. Holding account, it's, it stays to the treasurer, holds that money.
Yeah, cause it could be levied in, uh, October.
Cause when you're holding it, it's not taking away from.
That's the way I read it, I thought, well, that's too bad, cause you're still paying the bills.
So where's the rest of the interest go then? It's still accumulating, and you've already told. How much they're gonna pay, and it's not gonna.
I know, I read that too, and I, I read and read and read, and that, that's kind of a gray area.
That might have.
That's where it'd be nice to have some.
I agree with Trish. Before you go to a big project levy in October. Get that clarified.
Yeah, so I think we need to.
Yes, we had that certified, but this is great discussion. I'm just throwing out, I'm not making a motion, that we're gonna have a. The continuation of this conversation, continuation of looking at our information updated, of course, in May. We're gonna get everything where it needs to be by September, and then more information on off time levy.
Right.
For projects.
But most of them are gonna be September.
Most of them, September.
Ninety, ninety-five percent.
But we'll get the big project, and it's, luck will have it, so we don't have to try this out, cause you mentioned one oh three. That project, the way that's playing out, that's not gonna be a separate project, it's gonna be let me. But I mean, that could be one of Rick. But I mean, that could be one, and Rick mentioned that, cuz if it was done. For some reason, next month. And everything, all the completion hearing and the commissioners reports, everything was finalized, we'd probably let it, yeah. But I I don't think we'll get to that one until.
I don't.
So. But. So I I think right now we can have the discussion in May, go through the again, have some more information. And we'll have a lot of stuff cleaned up for September levy.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have any action today?
Do you need, do you need action?
It says. If you want to set the levy. For these that are right here. And then she can send out. It's a letter that says how much they'll owe. Right away.
And just state in that letter that if they'd like to pay it. They can within the thirty days.
With no interest, right?
There's no interest. Right.
Are you sure about that?
There is. Yeah.
So.
I read it multiple times.
There any, that's, I don't.
I don't, that's why I could see no benefit, the only benefit is you get it in two different tax years.
You did it in October and you needed write-off.
That's the benefit.
Right.
Oh, right.
That's the only benefit, and that is to the landowner or farmer, whoever, basically. That's his benefit.
Yeah.
To get it in two different tax years. You know.
But I.
And I can see that, cuz there's many times you think, boy, I'd like to have that expense this year, and here I'll get my letter in March.
And do it.
And they can't pay it.
Don't you have to pay it in full?
No, you have, you have to pay it in full within the thirty days.
The thirty days, so you wouldn't get two tax years anyway.
No.
It all being one tax year.
I said you could spread that out.
Well, no. If you wait to go to September and March, then you can get it in two years.
Then you can do your waiver payments.
And then the other option is your waiver payments, which are September and March.
If it's a big enough project.
The waived ones get interest charged. When you sign up for waiver payments, interest starts the first of September.
See, that's, we gotta figure out where.
Yeah, the people that wrote that, they make it easy.
The people that are getting the six percent on their warrants. Are still getting six percent. And. It's accumulating to the debt in that account.
It does.
But. So how do we do that?
Yeah, that that debt goes to that account and someday you'll have to levy for it and go on the next levy, next time it's levy.
Which would be the next year.
Because, well, if it's only.
Technically.
If it's all, you know, if it's only a couple thousand dollars, it won't be levy.
It just seems so. God bless.
Yeah.
Like. To me, it seems like the treasurer's office or whomever is not. Or whoever has the warrants should not be collecting in that amount of time, the interest.
And maybe they shouldn't be. Maybe the warrant should start collecting interest until September first, maybe we need to dig a little deeper in the wall, the wall and ask Doug that question. When do the warrant start?
Collecting.
Collecting interest.
I mean, there's.
Maybe there's. That hasn't been done right.
It is very unclear.
Yeah, extremely.
And all the drainage clerks feel the same way.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's a.
We just kind of. Get by as best you can with what you have.
All right, I I it's not a fun job, it's not an easy job, cuz it's. A lot of gray, kind of iffy stuff, and you could, we could talk to five different counties, and I bet you all five of them do it just a little different. It's not like the state says you do it this way.
I wish they would.
I wish they would too. Give you, give you something to follow.
They do the may.
Yeah, that stupid game.
But there is. Basically antique code that we work out of. And this gray area comes from interpretation of it, so between now and May, we don't have to do it tomorrow, anybody. But before. This discussion of the September levying process, then we need to get some of these questions answered.
Yeah. All right.
I, but I see no.
I'm gonna make a motion.
I see no benefit of the levying anything right now. Period. Cuz I think that's.
You wanna wait till May?
Yeah, I I just see this, if you start any levy process right now, you're gonna open up this whole ball of worms, can of worms, bottle of wax, whatever.
Uh, get, get sorted through it and get a.
Yes, and then have a clearer picture of all the levying process for September. Okay, otherwise, we're gonna just create a lot of, edit or questions.
That will be our goal, we will get her and talk with her.
Okay, she have eighty-nine, three forty-one percent.
Anymore, but.
Yeah.
Again, for IDAs and push lists and legislations.
I talked to John, that Joseph Paul does.
They're right.
I see no benefit of levy anymore.
Yeah, the whole thing I put new on was when.
Because there was a. Solutions told me at one time, you know, like they're going according to the law. And.
That was an old one.
The way they do.
So that was not on, so there was a new total that wasn't correct.
By the way, that John or Doug was describing it, it's. Allowable.
No, it'd be.
So if there's. Direct code or. How to do it, I think solutions would update their software to.
They should. Yeah.
I would think that would benefit them.
Oh, yeah, but they told me that it's. Up to code, the way it is, and they won't change it until. Code changes.
Don't expect the code to change.
It's good therapy, it's probably gonna cost them money to. So as long as no one's pushing the envelope, then they can say, well, we are up to code.
That's what they're saying. Well, if there's a motion made, I would. Make the motion. No levy today. That we. Follow up and continue on the research that we brought up and that we will reconvene this discussion sometime in May. Are as far as drainage goes.
Wanna get the ducks lined up in May?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But between now and then, all these good questions that were brought up, we've gotta get some of those answers from the programming and the solutions and the talk to the attorney again. And get to try to alleviate as much gray area in this as possible.
Try to make it as simple as.
Yes, to try to make it as simple as possible, so I would push, I mean, not tabling this, do some research between now and May, but we reconvene this discussion in May. And that's when we're gonna make our levy decisions.
So are we gonna get instruct Terry if we get a certain amount in the district? That that triggers her notifying us, I mean, we aren't sitting there looking at the numbers every.
No, but I think once.
We have an idea what's getting.
Go through this in May, and that obviously will be levied and cleaned up as best as possible for September levy. Then that is a yearly process.
Right, but. She has the ability to come and say, listen. This district is starting to get a little.
Yes.
Heavy, we need to have that in May, or we need to.
But she'll have that probably.
Whenever we're at.
Heavy to light, and then we are obviously all aware of the big projects.
Right.
What fixes that a hundred and fifty-five thousand, almost a hundred and fifty-six?
And that's just this year.
Yeah.
Well, I think as long as we're aware of that and we push that towards the September, then we're good. We're gonna make, make a move on it.
Yeah, hey, we have a motion. Do we have a no levy today, talk in May for September? Give us a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second for no levy today and talk in May for September. All those in favor?
All right.
That is unanimous with Kerry's.
You were thinking record time.
I was, I have one other thing too, sorry. Um, this is easy, so we've got the drainage, um, or the the new maps in, um. It came to twenty-five fifty-eight, so two thousand five hundred fifty-eight. Um. Would, I I just need to know where, what fund you guys want that to come out of. Um, cuz it doesn't really benefit all of the different districts. It is more like I didn't know if you wanted to come from the board supervisor's budget, um.
That would be, yeah.
Okay.
I said, it's our tool.
Okay.
That we use.
That, yeah, so, okay, all right, that was the only thing I had on that one, so.
I would agree.
On that.
Well, it looks like we're gonna have a little more.
Yeah, we're not gonna get our night dirty.
We have a giant map to put up, yes.
Oh, you did get a new giant map? A new piece of glass or?
No, we have that one to take off and put on, can we hire some?
I would definitely hire.
About doing it within.
No, 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 no.
That's fine, put it on the same.
Yeah. To suction it and get it and.
Yeah, because you'd have to hold it.
Yeah.
While you're putting it up.
No, probably, no, we don't.
We don't do that, that. You're gonna end up figuring out how much is a new piece of glass.
I mean, we can do. While they're here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I bet you they don't make any guarantees on that.
No, I'm sure they don't, but the same way if they come and fix the window.
I know.
They're gonna put it back in front.
Right.
Well, we can almost be reassured that if we don't have professionals handle that glass.
We will.
We'll be paying for a new piece of glass and hiring them to install it.
Yeah, and maybe paying for stitches too.
That could, that looks like a kind of an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, we don't know how thick it is or anything, do you have anything else here?
I don't think that. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Terry doesn't have anything else in drainage?
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gonna go out and granny.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, unanimous, okay. All right, minis.
Uh, the only thing I had last week was Board of Health. It was on Thursday.
Hey, Eric.
Uh, nothing official, extracurricular meeting wise.
Damn. I, um. Signed checks for IDDA on Monday, and I believe Trish, you're all signed, set up now?
I think so.
I think so too, I checked bank, I think we got everything done that we had to do. So, and and then I spoke with John Tollbert on this drainage stuff and Doug Strike. And that's all I have.
That was clear as mud too.
It's getting clearer.
It it really is pretty clear, the process.
It's just when you try to read it out of that book.
But it's what you, how do you follow the process, you know?
What day did you do IDVA, sign check?
Monday. Typically, it's Monday.
Oh.
Okay, but you have several days to do it, I usually just go down after meeting and do it. But sometimes you get a call on Thursday. And if the holidays come and it could be Friday.
Okay.
Gotcha.
But I I should be here ninety-nine percent of the time to do it. I think in the last. Six years, I think Keith had to do it twice, so. Go ahead.
All right, I didn't have anything last week, but this week we, I would remind people, we have the mobile food pantry on Wednesday, starting at four thirty. Down Fair Ground, four thirty till whenever, um, food runs out. Um, and also, I got a email. And I'm gonna lean on Matt here a minute. Uh. KHBT is starting a. It's, starts next Monday. Um, KHBT will be playing four Tom Petty songs during the six AM to six PM. And it's Tom Petty song is played, the first listener to call into the radio station wins a twenty-five dollar cash. And then they're gonna donate twenty-five dollars to Food Bank, is the way I understood, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
So if you put that in the paper, then it's not that way, Matt's in the back. Anybody that that, um, roots for the. The Lions and wins.
Rest team work.
It's got twenty-five dollars, that's fair. Uh, anyway, it's called the, uh, so it's a four-week promotion campaign, and they're gonna do it four times a day, and the four businesses, uh, Legaria Foods. Hog Slats, Larry's Pharmacy and Humboldt Motors, and we thank them for. That hundred dollars that will be donated towards the food pantry, that's the huge. Um, help for them, I heard this morning on the radio, they have numerous things that they're. In need of, and we're trying to figure out a way to get that on the radio to have the people that are going to the. Store, think, well, I remember they said they needed soup, or they needed noodles, or they needed, uh, I think one was syrup and pancake. Pancake. That, and I heard that this morning, the only reason it stuck in my head is it sounded good on the way. So, anyway, um, we thank all of the businesses that are, I know that the hospital is getting ready to do a. A drive, and they usually fill an ambulance or something with food and and it helps. Cuz there's a lot more people that are going through that door, anyway, that's all I had.
And I did not have anything official, um, last week, but I did have a lot of, um, budget questions for Rolling Hills. Cuz we're gonna be doing our budget. Um. Wednesday. So, uh, I guess I'm, I met on, uh. Friday afternoon for that, just to get some clarification and some stuff.
You met Friday?
The six, I know I had to sit here and look at it too. That's it, that's all I had, yeah.
Yeah, so do we have anything yet for budget? Work session that you're.
My question for you.
Laying towards.
Is. When would you like to have your? Schedule of. Department heads to come in and speak to you? The sixteenth, next Monday? Um, following the board meeting? The town board meets. That afternoon? Or would you wanna do it the seventeenth and eighteenth or?
Is the courthouse open next Monday on the sixteenth, that's Martin Luther King Day? And I didn't know.
Yeah, yes.
You're gonna be going, right?
Why are you talking all the department heads, or you just starting with one here, one there, hey?
Well.
I imagine there.
I'd like to get them nailed out.
Are they prepared to do that information?
Hopefully.
I mean. I mean, I would, if I'm, I'm just trying to think back to last year, we have like.
Didn't we do two or one?
The one that really takes a lot of time is Dean, cuz he's got.
Let's not start with him, but if you have the. Recorders, whatever, on Monday, somebody start.
Should be able to do the recorders and, uh, treasure. Should be able to do all the courthouse stuff on that one time, it don't take long.
It's about a two, three.
Oh, you're number two on the.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not. You're not on Monday.
Courters, treasures. Auditor.
I know.
How about?
The janitors. Just a real. Say go.
Uh, attorney, sorry.
Attorney, yeah.
God. IT.
That's true, that's another one.
And that one will probably take some time, just try and.
Yeah, that one would take some time.
Through some. Different stuff.
I think we need to try it, like Bruce said, we split it up a little bit, we don't have to try to do all these at once. So can we just get a start Monday, cause you'll be here and I guess I'm gonna be here Tuesday either.
We can video it and make sure that he sits and watches it, we'll all watch him watching.
We'll watch him.
At least start.
I'd like, like knockoff. Couple of them anyway.
I'm with Bruce, but I don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna spend from now till, you know, late in the afternoon.
My five-year program won't take very long at all, I mean, with the cost construction, basically what I did was.
Got rid of everything.
I stretched it from four years into five, yeah, so. Less construction and equipment starts driving back down. Stretching smaller and smaller.
Right.
Yeah.
So I guess as far as what you can make happen next week, I'm, but no.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Worried about a couple of them, if we get a couple of knocked up, then we're.
It's gonna be too long, there's not a lot of drainage stuff going on, I guess.
Will we need to do work next week, you said?
Well, I was, I was gonna say do them all, again, some out here.
No.
I mean, we could do the immediate courthouse, I would say, yeah.
Well, I'm just telling you this, I'm going tomorrow for a knee. Appointment and if they do it, my knee surgery the next morning, I'm in, so. The three of you might be doing them.
Okay, that's fine.